This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Seeing a presence of our of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Amherst Palm Regional School Committee. On Tuesday, December 8th at 6:34 PM. And we'll start with a roll call attendance. Mr. Demling.
Demling present.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser present.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington present.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan present.
And McDonald present. And our first, oh, sorry, and Ms. Lord. Lord present. Oops. It just. It don't appear to have a Google Hangout link that somebody sent up. It looks like Bethany's looking for the link. I did text it to her. Our first order of business is approving minutes, but we don't have those minutes in our packet. So we will move now to our next item, which is, I'm going to make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of APEA, AFCME, and UFCW. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and I do declare, with intention of returning back to open session. Is there a second? Second. Moved by McDonald, second by Spitzer, and we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan aye.
Ms. Lord.
She just put it in the chat because I think she's having trouble with her microphone. Lord aye.
Okay, and Ms. Seeger.
What's the motion? I'm sorry.
I moved to move into executive session.
Seeger aye.
Thank you. We have now entered executive session. Okay, welcome back, everybody. So our next item. Now our agenda is public comment and committee announcements. So we'll start with the public comment. And I will share my screen. Okay, are folks seeing the the public comment document? Okay, and for folks that are watching at home, this is already posted on the Regional School Committee Agenda's webpage, where you can read along if it's not coming through clear here. I'm going to stop sharing for a second because I have a bouncing beach ball. Okay, it's back. Sorry, I will start over again. Oops. Apologize, and now lost it. Okay. Okay, let's try this again. Just mentioned this document is on the website, so I'm going to scroll fairly quickly through all of the names because it's several pages of names. Great, so we also have committee announcements in this section. Are there any announcements from the school committee? Seeing none. Okay, so next up is Superintendent Zepplin. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Morris.
Sure, and I'll try to be brief tonight, given the time, the agenda ahead of us. So I want to start by thanking the family center for a number of years they've collected and from our staff gifts for families in need during the holiday season. It's never been more important this year, and thank our staff for being so generous with their donations. It's a group effort, and it makes a huge difference for our kids. And again, particularly this year with the COVID pressures, the financial related financial pressures, and just the grimness that sometimes is around this time of year. I just want to thank our staff and the family center for their work on that. Good news is last week we had a flu clinic. We had around 55 students were able to come in and get immunized. We're doing another one Thursday inside middle school camp. Got a little cold and a little dark towards the end of the last one, and that's not getting any better this week. But you know, thanks to, you know, our local CBS and Parent Guardian who's supporting this, as well as a bunch of folks who helped put it on, Robin Supranaut, our nurse leader. But you know, it's made a huge difference. We're doing another one because of the vans there. And it's not an easy time to go to doctor's offices and get appointments for these kind of things. So you know, it's been well appreciated by the community, and thanks for all the outreach, and thanks to the family center as well for doing some targeted outreach for families that we need. Next Thursday, so that would be the 17th, we're doing another session with clinicians from the Bright program, not our Bright program, but the kind of the general Bright program. And the title is going to be Managing Expectations and Emotions During the Winter Season, particularly as we head into what for many people is a holiday season. That's going to feel very different than any other holiday season they've experienced. Want to provide support for caregivers and for families about that, and they're both wonderful. I learned a tremendous amount, and I'm just lucky I get to facilitate, you know, Sarah and Courtney's work. We have been working, as I mentioned previously, with LSAC or Amherst Recreation now. They're looking to potentially expand the Distance Learning Center at the middle school in January. And you know, thanks to Mr. Harrington wearing his other hat and others who have been working with them to identify spaces that would work for them that have already been tested for ventilation and all those things. But it's great, I've been up there to see the kids, and everyone's very far apart, very attentive to the schoolwork. And we've seen it made a difference for our students who are struggling with attendance who have joined that. It's made a huge difference. So we're figuring out what we can do to expand that. That might involve transportation, certainly space, and our food service, also making sure kids have lunches. So many people working on that, but really thanks to our partners on that one. Speaking of our quality testing, I think in the next week we'll have a full update coming soon. Hopefully by the end of this week. The good news is that the number of our areas that needed work, you know, for HVAC folks to go in is very minimal. And the vast, vast majority, I don't have a percentage because I haven't gotten the official data yet, but the vast majority of our classrooms in every school in the district came out well above four. Some needed their air purifier system. Again, a surprising number didn't need it. They were just, the ventilation was well done, and that's really a testament to our facilities and custodial staff. So I know I've said this before, but now that we see the whole set of data for our buildings, which aren't, none of them are new, right? Two of them are ad renovated in all of our districts about 20 years ago, and that's what we consider as new and updated. To have the level of ventilation in them is pretty remarkable, and that happens because of ongoing work. Didn't happen because people did a lot of work this summer. It happened because years and years of good management by our staff. So I want to thank people, it makes us feel good. You know, I know there's many districts that didn't set a mark of four air changes per hour, and they have only a couple of classrooms. Dr. Superintendent today has got, you know, four classrooms in his district that are over four. You know, we've got over 100 classrooms in our district that are over four, and that's, you know, we just have a couple that we want to go back and take a look and retest. But you know, really good shape, and we'll get those whole results out as soon as we can. But you know, really, really pleased with how much work went into that. And we'll get into that a little bit later with athletics. And the last one, just a nice moment, that we had a high school student who was announced, or I was notified today, as a winner for the Young, National Young Arts Competition in the singer-songwriter category. The person's been identified as a finalist, so that they'll be able to attend, virtually attend the Young Arts Week of Programming in January, and then the award recipients are given. And you know, just really, really pleased with that student, the talent we have. Our students are fantastic, but also all the art staff from elementary to middle school to high school that foster that creativity and that love of the arts throughout. So really, really nice information I got today and wanted to share with the committee and the public. And that is my update.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Demling.
Yeah, could you just clarify, Dr. Morris, for the Distance Learning Centers, what the difference is between in-person support for remote instruction versus in-person instruction? It's my understanding, what's happening is in-person support for remote instruction. And you've been very clear about this, but I just, it's not a commonly understood distinction in the public. So if you could just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so we, thank you for that. We don't have any teachers on staff who are delivering that direct instruction. But you know, what it is, is that these students are getting in-person support to access the distance learning that's happening virtually. So you know, you know, just to be very blunt, students are still on screens. They're still accessing the distance learning, but they're doing it outside their home in a place where there's, you know, depending on the program we're in, where there's different levels of support based on student needs. And you know, we've gotten tremendous positive feedback from families for all three programs, not specific to the one that we have a little more ownership of at the high school for the intensive needs. But the teachers are still teaching virtually, the students are still accessing lessons virtually. It's whether they have in-person support from a staff person, either ours, you know, someone we've contracted with, or one of our partners has, that'd be the distinction.
Any other questions? Comments? Not seeing any. Okay. So we'll move on to the chair's update. And first, I just have two things. For the Amherst members, you're aware that I presented at the State of the Town meeting. Was it just last night? I think it was just yesterday, on public schools, including the regional schools. And so that, I shared that presentation with all of you, with the sections on the regional schools, and that is also available on the Town of Amherst website, if anybody's interested in seeing that. I also want to talk about a little, just share some thoughts on the email and the public comment, that some of the public comment that we saw tonight. So we, as you all know, we continue to receive a high volume of email and phone calls and comments from parents and caregivers imploring us to once again provide in-person learning opportunities for our students. We heard some of these tonight in public comment, and it's hard to hear their pleas, especially as they grow in frequency and urgency. And I too am very concerned. I'm concerned that our students are not receiving the curriculum and support that they need and that we committed to providing because they're not receiving in-person instruction. I'm concerned that we're seeing disproportionately high rates of chronic absenteeism among our most vulnerable students. And I'm concerned about the long-term impact this will have on student achievement, particularly among students who are economically disadvantaged or students of color. And I'm concerned about the long-term harm this could have on our schools if families continue to leave the district without plans to return. And it guts me to see us stymied in our attempts to address these concerns, concerns that become more urgent with every passing day and week. I want to assure parents and caregivers who are desperate to see their children back in school buildings this school year, we hear you, and we'll continue our tireless efforts to get there. If it comes to it, I'm prepared to ask the superintendent to develop a plan that can get our students back to the in-person learning they need. I hope that we will find a way through this, and we'll touch on this in one of our agenda items later tonight. But I also believe we need a Plan B. And now, we have another option for Morris School Committee announcements next on our agenda. So I will look again to see if there are any announcements that members would like to see now. Seeing none. We will move now on to our new and continuing business. And we are coming back to the topic of winter sports for the third moment, and hopefully tonight for a vote. And Ms. Stanser.
I have learned since our meeting last week that my son receives a stipend as an assistant coach for the hockey team. After consulting the State Ethics Commission, I've determined that I should abstain from this discussion and vote, that it would be very difficult to separate discussion about hockey from all of the other sports. And so I think the best course is to just remove myself from the meeting until you're done with this topic. So I'm going to do that now.
Thank you, Ms. Stanser. Okay. Great, so Dr. Morris, did you?
So I, it's actually very brief, and thank you for, Ms. Stewart, for being back with us as well. I think I want to be conscious of the the public comment that we received and how hard this decision is for all of you, for us. You know, and I think I could speak for Ms. Stewart on this one. We went back and we're going to rely on the, and make the same recommendation we made last week, not dismissive of the comments and discussion of the school committee or the comments from members of the public. But for us, we want to, you know, consistently go with the public health guidance we've been given. And the only two updates I'd have is we got good news for the machines that will bring the high school gym up above four air changes per hour. They've been ordered, and the delivery date is before the 25th of December, so well before winter athletics could start. So that's good news, and we feel good about the ventilation in that space, given those additional purchases that came out of the capital budget. The second update is for the pool, which we, again, we believe the ventilation is strong based on, you know, the design of the space. It's getting formally tested on Monday, and we'll get, we'll get that information midweek next week. We have started a permit process with the Town of Amherst to get the pool filled. To Mr. Sullivan's point, I don't know how quickly it warms and all those kind of details, but we've done what we can do to expedite the filling of the pool, which starts with a permitting process, based on the conversation and advice we received last week. I think the only last thing I'll add is Ms. Stewart shared an email from this, with me this afternoon, just given the governor's moving back to step three, phase one, or phase three, step one. I'm sorry, I get those things confused. And any implications we would have at this point, you know, and I did talk to the Health Director again this afternoon, about at this point, without having spectators, we'll be well below the occupancy level of any of the indoor spaces we'd be potentially using. As you may have seen, some of that occupancy levels went from 50% to 40%, but for indoor sports, at least that we're recommending in terms of basketball and swimming, because there's no other teams at the swim meet, because it's virtual meets, we're well under the capacity limits, and because the basketball, not having spectators, we're far, far, far below 40%. There may be other shoes to drop here that we don't know about either in terms of the numbers, if the cases continue to arise, or if the EEC and MIA shift some things. But at this point, from a space capacity perspective, we feel good about complying with those, the most recent governor order that was announced today, necessarily this afternoon. And we're going to continue making the same recommendation we made last week around winter sports. And I think, unless Ms. Stewart has anything that I'm missing, I think that's all we wanted to share. And then, you know, here to answer any questions you have as you're moving. towards the vote.
Okay. Um, I did ask, um, the question, um, in, in email and Ms. Stewart, um, shared an amazing spreadsheet tracking what all the other school districts are doing. But it, and the article in the Gazette today suggested that we're one of two districts that are, um, or school committees that are looking at it tonight and others won't be deciding until later this week anyway. So unfortunately, we don't have, I, I would say not a lot of information about what other school districts are doing, um, on this note. Would you agree or, or do you have new information, Ms. Stewart?
Yeah, that's the most up-to-date one that I shared with you last night, so.
Yep. Um, any, any questions or, um, reactions, comments from the committee before we move to a vote? Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the way I approached these things on the committee is if it's been a difficult discussion, I feel obligated to explain why I am, uh, prepared to vote the way I am. Um, so tonight, uh, I'm prepared to vote in favor of all sports, uh, including, uh, boys hockey and girls hockey. Um, just like three points I wanted to make. One is, um, you know, and we've talked about this before, right? Last July, when we were starting the, um, fall planning, which is, it's, it's always, um, a different experience for this committee when we are not all immediately on the same page about something, right? And so when there is legitimate, uh, difference of opinion, uh, and it is difficult to come to a consensus, even when we vote and there isn't a consensus, it feels odd. Um, so, I mean, I just want to acknowledge that and, and respect the fact that I, I think that there are legitimate points of view and good reasons. And I've heard a number of them from a number of different people in the community, um, to vote for or against, um, certain sports, uh, on, on this list. Um, and I appreciate the, the discussion we've had so far. Um, you know, for, for me, this, this comes down to, um, you know, what, what would the impact of our vote be? And, and, and what are we trying to base it on? And, you know, I think with a lot of this COVID-related stuff, we, we come back to, we want to minimize COVID risk and we want to maximize, uh, some benefit, right? Um, and unless you're talking about sheltering in place until everyone's vaccinated, every action we take in COVID times is, 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 comes down to that risk reward, uh, evaluation. And so, um, you know, while we've had good discussions about, um, you know, what the relative COVID risk is for these various sports. And, you know, I've, I've wrote a lot of detailed analyses of engineering reviews of hockey rinks and, and some theories about how COVID droplets operate in the relative humidity of a COVID, of a hockey rink. Um, you know, at, at the end of the day, uh, I'm, I'm not an expert on, on those COVID things. Um, and so that's one challenge. The other challenge is that, um, I'm even less of an expert on how this impacts the wellbeing of the students that we're talking about. And so I feel like, so who is in that, um, best position to evaluate and make that determination as whether the benefit of, for the student's wellbeing outweighs the, um, the COVID risk incurred for the student? And, and my conclusion is that it's, it's the parent. It's the parent's decision, um, to voluntarily, um, in, include their student in this kind of activity. And, um, you know, there, there definitely is, uh, some, uh, additional connotation when, when the school approves, um, the, the activity of, that we're sort of sanctioning it. Um, but, um, but we're not requiring students to participate in this. We're not requiring parents to participate in it. And so I feel like to take that autonomy of decision away from a parent about how they evaluate that cost benefit of COVID risk versus their student's wellbeing isn't something that, that, that I want to do as, as a school committee member. And the, the other thing is too, is, is the pragmatism, is that I don't feel like not approving hockey would keep a lot of kids off the rink. You know, I, I feel like most of those kids would find a way to play. And I, I, I can't say conclusively enough that it would be in order of magnitude more COVID risk. Uh, I don't know how many kids, you know, would, would go on club teams and travel around in a more broad section of the state or region than they would in a high school team. But, um, I, I, I think I can definitively say that, um, a number of those kids would be playing hockey anyway. And so our, in terms of the practical impact, it wouldn't have a large one. Um, so that's how I feel. I understand that people are in different places about this and I totally respect that. Uh, but that's how I'm, uh, feeling about the vote tonight.
Ms. Seeger?
I really appreciate hearing what you had to say, um, Mr. Demling. I, I feel like I've been kind of thinking about the autonomy of, of letting families, you know, have that choice. Um, one of the things I've been wondering about, and I, I don't know if I'd feel different about it, um, is, is, is there any provisional guidelines if something does happen? You know, um, if there is some sort of spreading event happening at these, um, will we reevaluate? Will, you know, I imagine things will close down and shift, but, um, I, I've been wondering about that. Uh, and definitely, definitely feeling uncomfortable in, in making this sort of decision because, uh, as Mr. Demling said, it does seem like when we, if we vote on this and we vote for it, that we are supporting it, which is true, but there were, um, just what that implies along with it. Um, families have choices. They can choose to let their children participate or not. Um, if we were in school in person, it seems like there might be a slightly different. I, I personally would feel slightly different about it, um, simply because if there was a spread, it goes a bit further potentially, um, even, you know, with masks and social distancing. So I, that, those are some of my thoughts about this. And I just wonder about provisions if things do show, um, just potential for spreading COVID.
I, I think, um, that, 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 that's a great question. I think that, you know, what are the protocols in place for if, if we were to see, um, a case or an exposure on one of, one of our sports teams? Does that sort of sum up your question, Ms. Seeger? Yeah. Do we, um, do we have that information, Ms. Stewart or Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I can start. Um, so, uh, you know, I think it would be much like we would with any other student who were in person or in our distance learning center. So, you know, there, there'd be quarantine, um, pieces. I think the element of what the school committee would do, I think, you know, is also what I thought I heard in your question is would you reconsider if there's cases that are, you know, more local and, and, um, I can't tell you, you know, what to do, but I can tell you that, you know, with cases rising at the rate they're rising, that's a, that's a likely occurrence. And, um, if a team, if our team plays another team and has to quarantine, I don't know if that, I mean, it'd be for you, but I'm not sure that's the decision-making matrix, um, because I think that it's likely going to happen. I've been seeing college sports, um, you know, there is some element of risk regardless of the sport. And for me, uh, in speaking with the health director, I'm not trying to convince you, uh, super respect the autonomy of the committee here. Um, it's, you know, what sports are more likely to, um, have higher levels of risk, right? And, and if, you know, that, that's, I think, what, you know, I would, you know, think about weighing, I wouldn't necessarily recommend canceling a sport that's been ongoing because there is a situation, unless it's a major outbreak. But in terms of, you know, you know, I think at this point, we're, we're thinking that, you know, if you're going to play a sport, you know, the odds are you play enough games with, against enough teams. Um, you know, the math is there in terms of the likelihood that you're going to be in contact with someone, um, who has COVID, right? That's just the reality of our situation. I'm not suggesting that we don't do any sports, but, um, you know, I think it's about who do we know who tests positive versus, uh, who's asymptomatic, never gets tested and we never know that we played with them, right? I mean, my assumption, sorry, this is like now going a little tangential, but I think it's relevant, is that, you know, anyone's go to Target or Stop &amp; Shop, right? Or any stores has been in the same, been, the math probably indicates that there's someone who's tested positive, who's been in the same inside space. Now, sports is different than going grocery shopping or things like that. But, but I think that's, you know, I, I guess I'd caution, if we're going to have a sport to, to have an overreaction, if it's not an outbreak, but just a need for quarantine, you know, I, I guess I have some mixed feelings about. Sorry, that was more long-winded than I answered, Ms. Seeger, I planned to give, but I, but I think it's, it's a really important question.
I, I think said another way, if we are in the red, we're shutting, we're not, we're not playing games and we're not, um, and we're probably, and we're, we're not playing, right? I mean, I think it's no different than where we in, in-person school also. So, yeah. Ms. Spitzer?
Thanks. And I, I guess I'll follow, um, Mr. Demling's lead and give a little bit of explanation about why I'm voting the way I'm going to vote. Um, so I, I, I've struggled with this a lot and I actually, I think, were it not for the health director's guidance, would have been actually going on the opposite end of the spectrum and voting to, you know, cancel all sports this season, just because, um, the, the trends and all of the data that I'm seeing are, um, not going the way we want them to. Cases are increasing, hospitalizations are increasing, positivity rates are increasing. And I'd really, and it's frustrating to me saying this while our schools are closed, but I do think one of the ways that, and I, I feel like our hands are bound right now, but for reasons that I don't want to get into right now. But, you know, if we do want to prioritize in-person learning throughout the state, I think one of the things to do is to, you know, be cautious in other areas. And if I really want to prioritize learning, and I know there are other factors other than this that are really tying our hands right now and it's frustrating. Um, but for that reason, you know, I, I think it's important, I'm not a health expert, so I'm going to follow the health director's guidance on this and the guidance that I'm hearing from our administrative leaders. And, um, you know, I'm going to vote for, in favor of their recommendations as they are today. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I, I heard directly from a basketball mom today and I, I asked, you know, we were talking about the hockey and how there were traveling teams. And so I knew that her daughter played on the, not only on the high school team, but participated in AAU. And I learned today that they practiced outside last spring, in the summer and into the fall, but they didn't participate in a single tournament because they felt that it was unsafe, there weren't any guidelines, that they would be playing teams from other states and such. But the basketball parents feel really good about the guidelines that have been set up by the MIAA and would like us to vote yes to basketball and all other sports.
So I, I will, I will speak. I, I think I, I spoke pretty passionately, um, last week on this, but I, I, you know, like Mr. Demling, I, I sort of would like to say, explain my vote. And I, I'm not going to repeat. I think I, I really appreciated the way you framed your, your rationale, Mr. Demling, because I, I think I share a lot of those same sentimental sentiments and I'm not going to repeat them. I think what the added thing that I would add to it is, one of the things that I've struggled with is why are we differentiating between the two designated high-risk sports? Um, and both, each of those sports have been addressed, um, and been required to come up with protocols for practice and gameplay and, and the sports in order to, in order to go forward with them. And the MIAA has, has, um, as one of our public commentators has said, you know, this, the, the protocols for MIAA have gone through and been vetted, then, you know, through multiple governing bodies. And for, you know, it, it's really difficult for me to say that we're going to accept one high-risk sport, that by the nature of that, the way that game is played, even with modifications, it's a high-risk sport. And yet we're okay with that and not okay somehow with another one that is also designated high-risk. And there's nothing about sort of the gameplay for each of those that, that signals that actually one is more high-risk than the other. And in fact, every, every athlete, youth athlete that I know, when I tell them that, oh, well, basketball is being recommended, but hockey is not, and, you know, their first reaction was like, wait, what? Um, and, and I think, you know, that, that's sort of internally my, my thought. And as I said before, I'm not going to say no to all sports because we're, we're not, you know, because they're high-risk. But I don't feel that I can single out one particular sport when so many, um, organizations have weighed in already on how to, how to play. And I think the other thing too, that I hold is, were we talking about in-person school? We look at sort of the cases and we hear about cases in schools in other states or in other communities. And what's the first thing we do? We look at what are all the protocols that they had in place before and where is the case coming from? Is it coming from spread within the school or is it coming in from outside of the community? And most all the times that we've looked at, and in fact, one of the reasons why we're talking about in-person learning continuing to be safe is because we have the protocols in place and we've seen that it's not being spread. It's more likely that it's coming from outside of the school than in the school. And then the particular case with hockey, that's also true, that the cases are coming from, from exposure that has nothing to do with the game of hockey, whether even within, or when in, before the shutdown, it was because of off-ice activities within the team, but off-ice activities, not because of the practice, not because of the gameplay. Um, and, and so when I, so if I apply the same sort of approach to the game of hockey as we've applied to in-person learning, both of which are volunteer, you know, the choice of, is it, is with, we're giving the choice to parents to choose whether to be in-person. We're giving the, the choices there also for parents to choose and look at that and opt out. And then finally, I'm just going to reiterate the state that the, the kids are going to be playing, um, no matter what we do. And that is, um, but it's going to be the kids that have the money to pay for a club sport and have the flexibility to be able to drive their kids to Eastern Mass. Um, and, you know, that one of those teams, you know, all of their, their entire schedule, half of the games are in Holyoke and half of the games are going to be in Cape Cod, in Marlboro, in Quincy. You know, they, this is where our community is going to be going. And some of the parents are, are asking and begging for high school hockey, just so that they can make sure that their kids are playing teams that are in our own region. And so for that reason, I also would, um, will be voting to, um, approve all sports, including boys and girls hockey. Are there others that would, um, just looking at, um, Mr. Harrington or Ms. Lord, if you would like, or Ms. Seeger, uh, Ms. Seeger spoke, Ms. Kenny? Any others would like to speak before we move to a vote? Seeing none. So I, I think we have two, um, votes on the table. And I think what the first thing that I'd like, that I would propose is that, um, we move to vote on the whole package and if, and see where that lands and then make, uh, the other motion on the, on the recommendation, the recommendation that excludes hockey. So I will make that motion. I will move that we approve winter sports and all of the sports that were recommended in, in addition, as well as boys and girls hockey, ice hockey. Is there a second?
Second. So just to clarify, that is boys and girls basketball, boys and girls hockey, Alpine skiing, or sque- squeaking, skiing and swim and dive, correct? All sports? Yes. Second. Thank you.
So moved by McDonald's, second, and by Kenny. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington abstained.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord abstained.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, nay.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
So the, uh, motion passes four to one with two abstentions, oh, three abstentions, if I can, Ms. Ms. Dancer?
Ms. Dancer just wouldn't, you would just wouldn't record the choose as part of the vote?
Thank you. Thank you. So the motion passes one, two, three, four, four yea, one nay, and two abstain. Okay. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to our next item, which is, uh, for town meeting review.
Ms. Spitzer, could you clarify that vote count one more time? Just want to make sure I, you know, not just make sure, I, you know, not just for Sheila, but just, could you say that one more time?
Yes, I have four yes, one no, and two abstain. Oh, sorry, it should be five, I didn't count myself.
That's what I thought, because four would not, four would not make that a positive vote.
Did I, did I even vote?
I lost track of that, but I just know the math, and I know four is half of the vote.
I will, I will say, McDonald, aye. And so that is five, five yea, one no, two abstain. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there was, it wasn't questioning your, what the vote was, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't saying it passed with four of the people voting for it.
Thank you. It's too late at night for me to keep track of these things. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the four-town meeting review, and the deck that we all looked at bright and early on Saturday morning is in our packet tonight, is again, with a couple exercises, I noticed, so.
Yep. So I can do a quick summary. On a positive note, we had 52 people, it was our first ever, I think, virtual four-town meeting, and the tech side worked way smoother, so thanks to everyone who logged in, and thanks for all the participation. As I mentioned on Saturday, much like a typical four-town meeting, with snow in some places, raining in some other places, and some sleet in between, so it was, that worked out well to, fair to be in their homes, but I think it really did promote some communication and collaboration, and people did really well with the different interface. It's really hard to be on a meeting like this with 50-some-odd people, but I thought it worked as well as possible. We had strong attendance from all four towns, so again, I appreciate people giving up their Saturday morning in December. As noted in the presentation, I think the way I framed it on Saturday is there's some years based on, you know, home values, new growth, all this complex formula state sets out, where it works really well, that the towns can pay roughly an equitable amount, or have an equitable increase, and we can move forward much smoother. And what we're experiencing this year with new EQV evaluations, EQV is a compilation of the wealth in a community, the way the state sets it, is that we don't have that. We actually have a very challenging set of circumstances separate from COVID, separate from some fiscal challenges the towns are facing. It just, what it means is that some towns are gonna pay, have a significantly higher increase than other towns, and that's regardless of what the total dollar is, you know, so there's no, there's no fault there. That's just how the data, the state spits out in terms of wealth and enrollment works out. In particular, Pelham in Amherst look like they'll have a significant increase. Leverett and Shrewsbury are at the opposite end of that, and again, that's not because of anything other than enrollment and EQV values fluctuation. But the bottom line is that we're looking, you know, as we looked at what are possible scenarios, and this is very early, and I'm very conscious that once a number's out, it's out, but it's out, it was presented on Saturday morning. We don't know health insurance rates, we don't know, we don't have negotiated contracts with any bargaining unit for last year, so I have to say all those caveats, this is important to note, this is very preliminary, but we're looking at between, the two numbers presented were between $1 and $1.4 billion of budget cuts for the regional schools. I will say that it's, in my opinion, be pretty catastrophic. We've had a number of years, two of the last three years, we've had very, very challenging budgets and made very significant budget cuts. We've found ways, we've cut administration, we've cut budget lines, we did have to close end to programs at the high school, and, you know, through some magic of Mr. Mangano, Mr. Dr. Slaughter, Ms. Cunningham, we were able to keep the staff, what we call reduction in force services, to a minimum, considering that we've cut over $1.5 million the last three years, two years ago, and the last year combined. This year is, there's not a lot left to go. We're talking about significant changes in program reductions, we're talking about class size increases, you know, that's the place we'd have to go. There is no kind of, kind of silver bullet that will solve this fiscal problem. So what I felt like on Saturday is, we presented that information, we didn't get into specific cuts, as we typically don't in December, because of the longer variables that are still out there. But it is going to be a very difficult fiscal year, and on top of that, all the uncertainty around COVID, you know, isn't helping. So, you know, I don't want to sugarcoat this one, I also don't want to get into specifics that we don't have to share with you yet about the implications, but certainly, you can't cut another one, one to one and a half million dollars of our budget without significant influence, significant impact on the student experience at our regional schools. We did hear from the town of Pelham, and I want to thank town of Pelham, which made a strong argument that the health of the regional schools is tied into the health of the region. By the region, he meant the towns of the region, that our schools, people move to our communities because of the schools. And so I want to thank the town of Pelham for having a really strong statement around that. But this is gonna be in a year of challenges, this is gonna be a particularly significant challenge of how do we deal with the fiscal challenges that we faced because of COVID, and how do we deal with just a weird year where the town's contributions is gonna be really uneven, and feel really unfair to some of our member towns, if not all of them, around that. So again, I wish I had a happier song to sing, I do not, except to say that, you know, I did appreciate some of the dialogue and conversation that we heard, and I think there's some reticence because of the financial impacts that COVID and other things are having on some member towns, to be able to collaborate and be able to fund the budget, and I heard that as well. So I don't want to paint the rosy picture that Pelham stated as the only picture we heard, that was not, it wasn't a monolithic opinion. That was how I experienced a four-town meeting. We started on time and ended on time, that always matters to me as well. So, you know, and I do appreciate the engagement investment. We said we'd come back probably in late January with more information. We may want to come back sooner, but late January is kind of nice, because then we'll have health insurance information, which is really helpful to getting more specific on the budget, because a percentage or two difference of increase on health insurance can swing a budget six digits. Won't swing it seven digits, so it won't get us out of the woods, so I'd be really clear about that, but could have a positive or negative impact. We'll also have charter numbers hopefully by then, we typically get them at the end of December. This year, we're expecting them to be a little late, but there's some other factors that, you know, I think the more information we can get, we'd like to go public with a more finite number, or a set of numbers, when we have a little more information. But that's how, my summary. You all were there, so you can definitely add your two cents as well, or ask any questions they have.
Any questions? Mr. Demling?
Yeah, so, that was a pretty shocking meeting, I think, from my, my experience. When the superintendent says that the first budget proposed is a radically different school system, would result in a radically different school system with a huge impact on class sizes, that gets my attention. And so that was the first part of what was shocking. The second part of what was shocking to me is that there was very little reaction and pushback on that. I would have thought for sure that, after you said that, Dr. Morris, that there would have been, OMG, this is, obviously, this is, you know, fiscal difficulty everywhere, but like, we need to figure out a way not to cause a catastrophic impact to, to the school budget. And, you know, with the exception of the statement from Pelham, we didn't hear that. And so I think, I think what can clearly be said is, if our committee is not, if our committee is already feeling like we don't want a radically different school system with a huge impact on class sizes, the catastrophic budget, then we're, we're in a different, we're in a very different place right now, in terms of how we're gonna fund the regional schools. The, you know, the other thing that I heard, and so that, some of the representatives from the town of Amherst gave us some good direct feedback. And one of the pieces that resonated with me is that we haven't yet done a great job, and by we, I mean, the collective we of the school committee in the district, of telling the story of what these cuts would mean. It's one thing to see a million dollars, or $1.4 million as a number, but to know what exactly that means, and because we're all deep into it, we can think about what that means, but, you know, the select boards and town councilors have a lot to pay attention to, and are dealing with a lot of cuts everywhere, and there's a lot of pain to go around. So I feel like we need to tell that story better, and process-wise, I feel like we need to do that rather quickly. So the report out from the town of Amherst is, their train's already moving, they have their initial guidance, and the, I'm just sort of paraphrasing, I don't want to quote here, but the paraphrase was, they were surprised that they didn't see a proposed regional school budget that had Amherst assessment level funded. So you did present the level-funded regional school, district budget, which was the $1.4 million cut, but because of the way the assessment method works out, that's, that's an increase for the town of Amherst. So if, if we had a regional school budget that had the same assessment as Amherst did last year, that would be, by my calculations, if we can confirm with Dr. Slaughter, is more like a $1.7 million cut. And so that's what they were asking for, so that's, that's the starting place. And I want to be, like, give the wrong impression here, I don't think anybody from the town of Amherst, any other town, no public official, wants a radically different school system with a huge impact on, I don't think that's something they want. But we do, I think, need to figure out how we get there together, because at the end of the day, this committee's gonna vote a budget which will, which will assess the towns, right? We're the legal entity that creates those assessments, and then the member towns will either approve or not those assessments, and then there's a whole other process. So I feel like it would be beneficial for the school, for one, for the district to, as soon as possible, start talking about the story of what those cuts are. I also think it would be good for the school committee to signal how we're feeling about the process right now, not in a contentious antagonistic way, but in a, hey, we got a problem that we need to work out and find a solution for, how do we work together to solve this?
Mr., Dr. Morris, sorry?
Just to put a finer point on something Mr. Demling said, I've heard this from staff, and I heard it a little bit after the meeting from elected officials from some member towns, there seems to be a perception that, you know, we always talk, the budgets are bad, and then we always figured a way to do it with minimal impact. I'm not saying everyone agrees that there's been minimal impact, but that's, there's some beliefs out there, with the number of people who get rifled is always lower than what people assume it'll be. And the impact, I think, people have been, our administrative team has been really creative, school committee's been really helpful in that, in working on that. And I think what I'm happy to say publicly, I'm not happy to say, but what I want to say publicly is, like, we're at the end of road of creative options, we've done this multiple times for multiple years. The reason we pulled from school choice reserves last year is because we're out of, you know, quote-unquote, creative ideas. We've cut the things that we could cut, and this is not gonna be a year where we cut a million dollars, and there's, like, last year, where we, I think we had a combined 1.0 ref of staff, and, you know, because of declining enrollment, frankly, our class sizes were not impacted that much. That's not gonna be this year. And I'm gonna sound, again, like a negative person, but I also want to right-set the expectations, because I perceived some of the responses on Saturday to be, well, they, you know, they're really good at cutting budgets, they always figure it out, and I want to kind of correct that notion that we'll always figure it out. I think we've been able to do it, do some great work, but I don't see that scenario playing out again. So I want to be really clear about that, but I do wonder if that is some of the thinking, and it gets to Mr. Demling's point about being really clear on the implications, perhaps a little sooner than we typically would.
Thanks to Ms. Seeger and then Ms. Spitzer.
I, I think I walked away with a different sense. It's true that, you know, I didn't hear any outpouring of pushing back on that on Saturday. You know, coming from the town of Leverett, we've had guidance of a one and a half percent increase across all departments. And honestly, as a school member, school committee member there, I was grateful that it was positive and not zero. I feel like, you know, coming from that town, yeah, it's shocking. Like, I do not want these cuts to happen, and I'm sure that no, no one in our town wants these cuts to happen. I think it's challenging, because there's no narrative of what these cuts look like, so that will definitely be helpful. You know, but what can we do as a separate town, in looking around, and knowing that there's a different ability for the different towns to be able to pay? And I think that's what's challenging, and it's been challenging for years, of like, balancing all that. So, you know, what can we do to help as a separate town who isn't as heavily impacted this year? And I think, you know, that's part of the getting creative, but I think you, I'll be curious to see the next meeting with more details about the narrative and what this actually looks like, if that doesn't spur more conversation, but, you know, also feeling like, I'm not sure what I could do to be helpful here. That's just my opinion.
Okay, Ms. Spitzer?
Thanks. Yes, so I had a similar point of view to Mr. Demling's, and I think it comes for us also sitting at the Amherst breakout table, and kind of hearing something different from the members of our community than from the members of other communities. And I guess, I also, you know, the comment to tell the story better, and, you know, as I, I was thinking about that, and, you know, kind of getting to what can we do as committee members to be of use? So I, we used to have a budget subcommittee that would meet fairly regularly with the Director of Finance, and I'm wondering if that might not be something worth kicking off again, meeting to work with him to invite, with Mr. or Dr. Slaughter, to try to come up with some of the more compelling stories, because I think we commented it from a different point of view as elective officials than the administrators who are constantly looking at these numbers, and sometimes, hopefully, we come at it with, with fresh eyes. And so I would, I would be willing to, you know, find some time, if that's amenable to other folks on the committee. I think I, trying to remember who else was on the committee, but I remember being, yeah, Ms. Dancer, definitely. So anyways, just, that was one idea I had of what ways to move forward in thinking about how to, how to deal with this challenge.
And I think we'd probably be, because we haven't, we, we haven't ever come back to committee assignments, so I think that there's, if there's others that are interested in joining that committee, they could. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, for those who haven't been on the committee for very long, the last time we did this, we cut two programs. We cut the preschool, and we cut the foods program. And when we talk about, I mean, I'm gonna start crying again now, but I did that at the, one of the four-town meetings. But anyway, the foods program, when we cut that, that had 72 seats that were filled each semester, and we had to eliminate that program because we couldn't afford it anymore, and that was the most oversubscribed program that the school had, and we had to let that go. So I can't even imagine where we're going this time. It's, it's gonna be terrible. But I'm happy to share that story a million times, and you'll see me cry every single time between the preschool and that food program.
Mr. Demling?
So I really like Ms. Spitzer's idea of getting the budget committee group back together, have a little more focus on that, communications and whatnot. I think Mr. Sullivan brings up a really good point about when we tell the story, it's not just about telling the story of what would be cut this year, it's what have we already cut, including two years ago? I think it's also important to point out that this hasn't been the result of like fiscal mismanagement on the part of the school committee or the district. You know, there was, it was, there was the self-managed health insurance crisis from two years ago that was, there was no fault of our own, and then there was COVID, you know, so like, and I think that helps complement the creative ideas. In terms of like signaling early on that we need to productively collaborate, the school committee needs to productively collaborate with the towns. I did, I did put together a draft motion for tonight, but I'll just read it, I'll put it in the chat, and if people feel like this is something we want to state tonight, we can talk about it. But it goes like this, "The Amherst-Pelham Regional School Committee is committed to working with our member towns to find a way to not level fund our schools for a second year in a row, and we are further committed to working with our member towns to find a way to cut less than $1 million from next year's level services." So I just put that in the chat for the minutes. But basically, the idea is to say, we're starting from a different place, not to create conflict, but just to put, to highlight the fact that that's the reality. And we're not judging our member towns who are in very difficult financial spots, but we need to figure this out, we need to roll up our sleeves and work it out. And that, if we feel that we, who knows where the exact numbers land, but we certainly cannot be level funding our schools two years in a row. And, and just to kind of put a number on it, that
And 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 just to kind of put a number on it, but that and I really hope it's far less than a million dollars that we cut from level services. But just to say, you know, at a at a bare minimum, that we want want the cut to be less than a million dollars. And then that at least gets the discussion. It gets it focuses our process so that it can inform at least the town of Amherst process, which is already well on their way to making a recommendation from their finance committee, I believe later this month. So I don't know what people thought of that.
Ms. Dancer.
Um, I think that's very well said, Peter. I think this is a time when we really have to try to be together. Because being divided is not going to be productive in any way. One comment that I have. When we say the words level funded budget, I think people think that means we're going to do the same thing this year that we did last year. I think that's a kind of a misleading way to phrase what's happening, because in fact, we know it won't be the same as last year because of the things that we're obligated to pay. Which means we're going to have really less than we had. So I don't know if there's another way to say that, but I, to me, you know, to say level level funding, I think a lot of people are going to perceive that as, well, what's the problem? You're going to have the same you had last year.
I if you're coming at budgeting from sort of a non municipal approach, like that is, I agree, like that's not, that's new lingo. And it's it's jargon. So I I don't know if this is any better, but, you know, to talk about sort of that we have to that we have to cut to provide the in to provide that we're not able to provide the same same services or same same programs that we were able to provide before. And that that's a cut sort of really, as opposed to using level services and level funded. But I don't know a better way to say it. It is a complex. Maybe that's that's something that the budget committee can can play with and how to frame this in a way. So folks who aren't as close to this as we are. So we I think we have two two things on the table to to just, one would be a nod about the budget subcommittee sort of taking this on to progress and but maybe I just said this in the bad order. Maybe we should start with the motion as proposed. Maybe Mr. Demling, you could just make that motion and and we can move from there. Because maybe the budget subcommittee work might come fall out of whatever our motion is and what we decide there.
Sure. Yeah, and I comment on level funding, level services. So that's a point, a point very well taken. I I tried to get the Amherst Finance Town Manager to clarify that when they did the budget indicators meeting a month and a half ago. I think this is just something we're going to have to struggle with a little bit. When when elected officials and members of the finance subcommittee and select boards and whatnot see level funding, they'll know exactly what we're talking about. So I feel like that's so that that's why for the phrasing of this motion, I tried to follow it up with, okay, well, what that means is that we want to maximize our our cuts. So it's it's sort of trying to communicate two ways, right? One to municipal officials who are in the weeds about what those terms mean and in the public as well, but Ms. McDonald, could you call me on a call me call on me again to make that motion? Because I believe when you make a motion, you have to do it the first thing you make your comments.
Mr. Demling, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee is committed to working with our member towns to find a way to not level fund our schools for a second year in a row. And we are further committed to working with our member towns to find a way to cut less than a million dollars from next year's level services.
Second. Moved by Mr. Demling, seconded by Spitzer. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer.
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Motion passes unanimously nine to zero. Ms. Seeger.
Well, sorry, I I feel like I might be interrupting a process here, but I do have a question about budgets in general. My understanding, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, is that Amherst asked to have their portion be level funded this year? Is that true? Like a zero percent increase? Is that just like a drafting? Do you anticipate that changing? Because it sounded like the finance committee was meeting, like what? I don't know if that's a good question. I'm just trying to understand, like, that's the guidance right now, you know, in it. Hopefully, that might change, but there's a chance that they might that might not, right?
I I believe we don't have any indication. Mr. Demling.
Yeah, so it's exactly the right question to be asking. And the the short answer is that it's a process. Right? The the town of Amherst started with a financial indicators meeting where it was level funding for all departments. They have a finance subcommittee of the town council, which is meeting now. And I I believe they they said they were going to make their recommendation to the town council later this month. Then the town council gets their recommendation, then there's a public forum. And then they hear from us and we eventually pass a but, you know, so there's many months. I mean, not forever, but there are a number of months yet to go between now and the time when the the Amherst Town Council would would vote on on the assessment that they would receive from us after we vote the budget. Right? So this so this is actually, even though Amherst process starts off pretty early, this is pretty early for us to be making any kind of a qualitative assessment, but given the circumstances.
So I'm looking at the budget subcommittee. And we have Ms. Spitzer and Ms. Dancer. Is one of you the chair? Ms. Dancer, okay, so you you would call the meeting. Are there others who are our members or would like to be members of the committee? Ms. Dancer.
I just wanted to say that we've lost one of our members. So we only have two currently, I believe. So we really do need an, we should have another person if someone is willing.
Ms. Lord. You're oh, you're
for the budget subcommittee.
Yep. Ms. Ms. Seeger.
I'm just curious of what the commitment for that is. And how often you meet.
Ms. Dancer.
I would say in the past, you know, I was not on it for a long time, but typically those meetings where we met with the finance director, he said, here's the stuff. And then we said, okay. And then it went to the to the full committee. So but in talking with Sean Mangano, who was the finance director then and other people, it was kind of like in years where there aren't big issues, that probably works. And so we haven't had a meeting for a year, probably. I'm guessing that and and that was maybe once every maybe once a month. And they were not very long, but I'm thinking that this might be a little bit more of a commitment than than what we've had before.
On a spectrum, though, probably less than being a on the bargaining team for with union negotiations.
No, I can't speak to that. So I don't know.
Okay, so we have Ms. Ms. Dancer, the chair is is going to coordinate with Ms. Spitzer and Ms. Lord on setting up that meeting. Okay. I'm moving on to our next item. So it's in our packets. I believe it's incorrect. There is a typo, but it did get updated in the posting online today. So the next item is not about planning for this year. It's about planning for next school year. 2021, 2022 initial planning. And I think our intent was to start that conversation so that we are in a position to think through the many challenges, permutations, possibilities, options for when we're thinking we'd like to, you know, getting getting starting school earlier to take advantage and have more months in warm weather and or outdoors, as well as other aspects of that. So I just I wanted to toss that out there. I don't have any other sort of introduction on this topic. So if other folks would like to speak to this. Dr. Morris.
I just I wonder, given, you know, and I'm open to anything, but given the time, this is a pretty big topic. And I wonder if we are meeting next week or at the beginning of January, if we might queue this up a little differently than than two and a half hours into a meeting. So, you know, respectfully, I just I wonder.
I was about to go there when I said, when I talked about, I was just scanning the room and scanning the faces, and I'm seeing a lot of burden. So I think our folks agreeable to that suggestion that we table this and move it to next week. Great. So future agenda planning. So we talked about next week, but I think also we have a JLMSC meeting. So coming up this week. So I wanted to talk about agenda items for that as well. Ms. Dancer.
God, I'm talking a lot tonight. I would, if it's possible, would really appreciate some follow up on the topic of students who are not attending. The survey that we did and what if any kinds of outreach has happened? I would really appreciate that, some kind of follow up on that.
Dr. Morris.
Yeah, so we're actually got a little bit of data on that, and we're going to get more, I think, when we get into back in January. I'll be able to share more hard data in terms of what trends we're seeing since we've implemented some of the changes that we have. So I'd love to talk about that. I think, you know, just if we're looking for trends in data, especially because kids were out for three days on Thanksgiving, it the longer being able to track that data through the holiday gives us a better chance of seeing what the data actually is. But we are actively working on that. I do want to bring that back to the committee.
Ms. Dancer.
So that would be great. But I'm wondering, can you give us even just a maybe next meeting, just a little bit on what you've done to get that data? You know, what kind of outreach has been done?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Mr. Demling.
So a couple of the items of interest that some Amherst Town Councilers expressed at the four towns meeting were status of our different options for solar panels and potential for CPA money for the fields. I know those have not been top of list at our recent agenda items, but I would really like to be able to respond with a good status update and then, you know, see what we can't do to push those things forward if 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 those representatives are telling us that those are priority concerns for them right now, given that we have other budget things to work out with with all our elected officials as well.
Any other items for the regional school committee? Okay. Do we I don't have it actually up, but do we want to? There was conversation about a JLMSC agenda item for this week. Sorry, I'm fumbling while I look for it. Sort of on on the note, on the comment that I talked about before was the the idea is to talk about how our how we are current, our current our current distance learning, our current situation, we're not actually meeting and adequately providing the curriculum and support to our students in an all distance learning model. So the sort of the statement that I that I made during the chair's comment. And so how is the committee thinking about proposing that that this be discussed at the JLMSC on a upcoming one, assuming that there's one this Friday? I'm sort of looking at the Ben, that if there's if that agenda has been proposed yet or not. And so is there ability to sort of bring this that topic from my comments into into that this week's JLMSC?
So I believe this week's meeting was posted today. I'm not not sure I if Dr. Morris would know if it's alterable. So it would be within the 48 hours.
Dr. Morris.
Yeah, as long as it's reposted 40 with the the final posting within 48 hours, then from an open OML perspective, you'd be to the good.
So as sort of just restating my comments from earlier, you know, that students aren't receiving the curriculum and support that they need right now. And we're hearing that loud and clear. And is there an opportunity to to discuss within the JLMSC this conversation about whether whether we're we're in fact that whether in fact the MOA is is preventing us from from doing that. Is that something I'm seeing heads nodding? A topic to be bringing to the JLMSC. Ms. Seeger.
Yeah, I mean, there there was that clause in the MOA about the JLMSC being able to evaluate that. I can't remember which one it was. So it seems appropriate to bring it there. To try.
So, Mr. Harrington, can I send you that 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 agenda item to get onto the agenda?
Definitely, yes.
Okay, I will send that in the morning. Great. Any other agenda items for future meetings? Seeing none. We'll move on to warrant report. I do not have any to report tonight. Ms. Spitzer, do you?
I do. Just give me a moment to toggle over to them. Just to.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Because I get mixed up. I'm sorry about warrants. Does which district does each of you sign warrants for?
I signed for the region, so I think I should be reporting tonight.
Reporting at all. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that was my clarifier, but thank you for answering it. Sorry about that.
No problem.
So you saw joint meetings.
All right, let me. All right, so I, Carrie Spitzer, authorized for my signature to payables in the amount of $259,290.30 for the warrant dated December 7, 2020. This included general fund expenses of $47,626.42 revolving fund expenses of $11,694.21 and grant fund expenses of $199,969.67. And I signed this on December 8, 2020. I also authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $148,201.41 for the warrant dated December 3, 2020. This included general fund expenses in that amount. And I signed that on December 4, 2020. That is all.
Thank you. And next up, we have accepting gifts. And I don't believe we have any gifts in our packet tonight. So I will make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, seconded by Spitzer. There is no discussion on adjournment, so we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer.
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great night.